Okay. Very cool. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I am going to call to order the April 8th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting for the City of Oak Harbor. In terms of our roll call, we have two members in person, Commissioner Frye and Chair Engelbreit, and then we have two members online, Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Bradley, and our ex officio City Council member, Jim Wisner, is absent. So, moving on, I will give you all a moment to look at the minutes for our March 11th, 2025 Regular Business Meeting. If there are any questions, let us know. Otherwise, I'll give you a second to read those, and when you're ready, I'll take a motion to approve, or change, or do whatever.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll, excuse me, I'll second it.
All right. Motion by Frye, second by Bradley. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Moving on to our public comment section. So during this time, citizens may comment on subjects of interest that are not on the agenda or agenda items. To ensure comments are recorded properly, please state your name clearly. And into a microphone, individual comments will be limited to three minutes. To ensure maximum participation during this 15-minute allotted timeframe, folks may also submit comments online at www.okeharbor.gov/publiccomment at least two days in advance of the advisory board meeting. So we've received two public comments that will be displayed online, and then we'll move to folks in the room. Okay. So, those were our two public comments, and I'll open it up to anyone in the room or online. We'll start with folks in the room. All right. Seeing none, we'll start with anyone online who wants to make any public comments. All right. Going once, going twice, three times. Thank you all for participating and being here. Okay. So moving on to our next item, which is a public hearing on zoning code amendments to Oak Harbor Municipal Code Sections 19.08.120 and 19.08.676, presented by our Associate Planner, Nolan Grunska.
Making sure we have the right presentation here. Yeah. Yes. So, thank you, Commissioners. I'm filling in for Ray Lindenberg today. The presentation I'm bringing you today is for amendments to Chapter 1908, our definitions for planning code. Those definitions are our building line definition, which currently only allows for an architectural encroachment of eaves into the setback, whereas it is typical for the definition to allow encroachments of other architectural features as well. And so, we've made amendments to the definition to include sills, fireplaces, cornices, and chimneys, and flues, as well as open beams and trellises. And we've adjusted the degree to which they can encroach into that setback down from three feet to two feet. We, this is, these were reviewed against pure cities' codes, and this is, we find this typical, and a change that would be beneficial for many developers. The other definition... I don't believe so. Have to turn it on. There we go. The other definition is to our private nursery school, child daycare center, or kindergarten definition. The City of Oak Harbor currently regulates the amount of outdoor play area that a daycare is required to have, and the State of Washington also regulates the amount of outdoor play area that a daycare is required to have. We are proposing to simply defer to the State of Washington's requirement and amend our code to read as such, so daycares do not have to comply with two separate requirements. We are recommending approval for both of these, and our recommended action is on the screen. Any questions, I'll gladly field.
Sounds good. Thank you. Yeah. Are there any questions from any of the Commissioners? All right. Yeah. Go for it. Commissioner Frye.
The only question I have is on the 1908.120. It says flues, chimneys, so on and so forth, may extend to the line. Does that mean, like, the chimney can be on the property line? Is that what that means?
No. So the building line is the building envelope established when the setbacks are determined from the property line. So imagine that your side setback typically, in most zones, is five feet. So your property line, you'll have your property line, and then you'll have a required setback from that property line, which we'll say is five feet. That five feet away from the property line is your building line. So when this says that you can have a setback encroachment of two feet, that means that if you have an architectural feature that can encroach two feet across the building line, it can be three feet away from the property line.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone online have any questions? Have any thoughts?
No. I have one real quick comment, not necessarily a question. I think anytime that we can, if the State of Washington has some sort of regulation, and we can defer to the State of Washington to eliminate the trying to comply with two different regulations, that just makes all the sense in the world.
Thank you. Okay. So, thank you, Nolan. I will now open our public hearing component of this item for folks who are in the room or online to make comments, and then afterward, we'll close and have some Commissioner deliberation. So, anyone in the room interested in making public comment on this specific item? Seeing none, I'll move to folks online. Is there anyone on our online portion of this meeting who would like to make comments on our definitions in this public hearing? Okay. Not hearing anyone from the public. I will say going once, going twice, three times. Thank you very much. Okay. So we will now close the public hearing portion of this item and move on to our Commissioner recommendations and motions. Do I have a motion to approve or to recommend?
I make a motion to accept both as written. Let me correct that. Let me make a motion and move to recommend approval of amended amendments to Chapter 19.08 of the Oak Harbor Municipal Code pertaining to the respective definitions of building line and private nursery school, child daycare center, or kindergarten.
Very cool. Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Frye, second by Bradley. Okay. So, anyone else have any further comments, discussion we want to make before a vote? I agree with Commissioner Bradley, right? I think that when we can streamline and consolidate some stuff as it overlaps, I think that's a smart move and makes things a little bit simpler for folks. Anyone else? Any other thoughts? Okay. So I will ask you all to vote. So, all those in favor of the recommended motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Looks like the motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. Okay. So, moving on to our discussion, presentation, report items, we'll move to our 2025 Major Comprehensive Plan update, presented by our Principal Planner, Kac Kamak. Go for it.
Good evening, Kac Kamak. Here to hopefully give a short presentation on the update to our comprehensive plan. What I'm going to do is basically repeat the presentation that I gave the City Council at their workshop. We were hoping that that would be a joint meeting between the Planning Commission and City Council. Since several members were unable to attend that meeting, I thought I'll provide that same information here. I think it's helpful to kind of understand some of the concepts that we are kind of dealing with, with this UGA and lands capacity analysis. So I'll go over some of that. But I also want to say that since our discussion with the City Council, they have given us input for update. We'll gather that information, and I'll provide that as we go along with the presentation. And hopefully tonight, I can get input from the Planning Commission as well, and we're hoping to go to the City Council workshop on the 22nd of this month. So that's kind of the summary. So, with that, I'll jump into the presentation that I provided the City Council, and then we can kind of discuss about topics as we go or at the end. So, what I'll cover in my discussion today is just briefly start with where we were at the workshop, with the February City Council workshop, after the joint meeting with the City Council and Island County. And then I'll talk about how our initial lands capacity options memo came out. I'll kind of jump into that a little bit. And then I'll compare it to the one that is provided in your packet with the recent changes. And then we'll talk about capacity and targets, and then we'll look at some of the land use changes that are already, or were all proposed in the original options memo. We'll talk about environmental impact statement. It's a possibility that we'll be going in that direction. And then we'll kind of touch upon UGA expansions, and look at a draft map that we shared with the City Council, and then talk about next steps. So, I will try to cover that ground as fast as I can without trying to skip too many details. So, before I jump in here, at the February 22nd or 25th workshop, we discussed with the City Council the legislative input we got from Island County and the City Council on our lands capacity, because our original lands capacity analysis showed that we had capacity for a certain distribution of the income ranges. When we shared that information with the county, the county requested that we consider more, a different distribution for the same allocation, different distribution which accommodates more of the 0 to 30, and 0 to 50, and 50 to 80 average median income in the city limits. And this was challenging, because that income bracket is known to be accommodated in the higher density districts, the R3, the R4, or the mixed-use districts. And that land is actually limited in Oak Harbor. So, it's really challenging when we got that response, so that's why we had to work with the City Council, and then we had to work with our consultants to see, can we adjust our strategy to meet this new distribution? So I'll go over some of the options that we can consider in trying to meet this new and revised distribution. So at the February meeting, the Council was okay for the city to move ahead and explore options to try and work with this redistribution. We did some of that work, and that's what we shared with them at the workshop, and that's what we're sharing with you now. And before we officially kind of shared with the county, we were taking input and making adjustments. So what is the difference between the land use options memo that was provided to us early, I think in October, or August, I should say, and the one that's most recently? So on the left side is the table that has the information which was in the original. And then the one on the right is the table that's provided with the most recent copy that's in your packet. So I'm just going to highlight a couple of things that we had to look at in order to accommodate this redistribution. The density. So, we already, in the original option, were hoping to consider higher densities. So these are all options for the city to consider. This is not a guarantee that we're saying that we will get to these densities. We're saying these are the tools that we can use in our development regulation in order to meet the target and the revised distribution. We still have to go out for community input. We still have to do a lot more analysis to determine whether these will work out, and eventually, we will have to choose a bunch of tools that will work for us. So we have a lot more work, but what is it that we're willing to consider? These are the things. So in the original options memo, we wanted to have some density increases, and you can see that in the new one, we have substantially increased the densities from the previous ranges. So, these development regulations create opportunities now for more units to occur within a given area. So these are pushing height limits and things like that, which we'll get to, and that's the next thing I want to point out, is the height limits. So in the original land use options memo, we, the city was open to consider higher height regulations in some of the districts. Currently, they're capped at 35 for some of the lower-density districts. Even our commercial districts are capped at 35. And then our CBD and R4, I think, have higher heights. But I think our highest district is in the CBD, which is currently at 55. So with the new heights, and I think I'm talking about it in reverse when I'm, because I can't see very well, the top circles are the heights and the bottom ones are the densities. So I'm, I just caught that myself, so I'm just adjusting it. So, we are going to heights up to 65 feet, going to consider heights, and increasing that will increase the possibility for going to five or six stories, which can provide the density that we think can accommodate some of the 0 to 30, 30 to 50, and 50 to 80 AMI. We also looked at inclusionary zoning. This was not included in the original option. This is to say, if you want to build at higher heights and higher density, then you must provide for affordable housing, which again, targets that 0 to 30, 30 to 50, 50 to 80. So these are all additional things that the city is currently saying that we will explore and consider in trying to meet this revised target. So, when we say, what is target, how do we achieve it, and what is capacity? I want to go through a little graphic, and I hope the people that are online can see it, to try and differentiate what it means to have capacity, and what is the target within that capacity that we're trying to hit. So, if you can imagine a city, any city, let's take Oak Harbor, and think about what is the total capacity of the city? And this total capacity can change. It is not fixed. So, for example, let me give you an example. So let's say we have 6,000 lots in the City of Oak Harbor that's zoned single-family and can have a single-family residential unit on it. Now, the state has come and said, you can already add an ADU, or you can add two units to these lots. So technically and mathematically, you can say 6,000 lots will have a capacity of 12,000 units. You can double it, right? But even mathematically, if you think, although mathematically it shows that, we know in reality that that's not going to be the case. So that's why I say the total capacity will vary based on regulations and over time. So that is not something that we are calculating in our lands capacity analysis. That's not our task, and that's not what we should do, because it's always going to vary. The moment we change our development regulations, increase height, increase density, we change the capacity of our city. So, the total capacity can go up or go down, and it's based on changes with regulations and happens over time. So, I gave you the example of the single-family, so you can imagine for multifamily, there are variable factors, and so for the total city, the capacity varies. So, what are we supposed to plan for? We're supposed to plan for the next 20 years. So if this total capacity that's potentially here in the city, what can we expect over the next 20 years? That's what we should plan for. So how do we determine what that capacity is? That's what, and how do we determine what that capacity is? So we use our current regulations, whatever our height is and whatever our density is, and say, if we don't do anything, this is what we expect from our 20 years. And we have to determine, how we determine that, by using market factors. So just like the single-family example, mathematically, there's 12,000 capacity, but what is the realistic thing we can get in 20 years? So we have to look at lot sizes, we have market factors, we have deductions, all kinds of things that we can use in order to determine what that 20-year capacity is. So that is kind of what our original option memo did, is use the county-wide planning policies and the established market factors to determine what that 20-year capacity is. And that 20-year capacity was shown that it can take the 5,533 units that the county has allocated to the City of Oak Harbor and its UGA. So, what do we do? So, that's where we have to find some extra capacity within that total capacity. We have to kind of change our regulations a little bit, maybe do some rezoning to make some more capacity. And when we do that, when we change regulations, so let's say we go from 35 feet to 65 feet for R4, as an example, across all of those zoning lots, we have increased the capacity. So again, does that mean we will get all of that in the 20 years? Likely not. So there's a market factor there as well. So, we have capacity, we determine that using changes in development regulations, and so those two tables that I showed you is all of those options that we are considering in trying to determine whether we can kind of increase the capacity for the city. And even within that, we have to determine what we can get in 20 years, even with these changes. And we have to make sure that we can hit that target that the county has asked us to hit, and that's kind of what we're trying to do. So, that is the target, and that's our goal. So, we may increase our capacity. We can go to 60-foot-tall buildings or 70-foot-tall buildings, but we still have to use a market factor to determine what is it that we'll realize in the next 20 years? What is it possible? And that takes some market factors, and the state provides in its, in all the methodologies that the city can use local market factors to determine that. So we would have to do all of this in order to determine, among all the LCA options that I talked about, heights, densities, what is it that best suits us, and how is it that we can get to the targets? That's kind of what our rest of the comp plan process will try to address. So, this is our, the map from our existing lands capacity, or lands options memo, and these are the areas that were identified as areas where we could gain additional capacity. So not only do we adjust development regulations, we look at land use changes. So these are the existing areas, and I just brought this up to, this will change significantly, by the way, with our new memo and new density. All of this will change. So for example, in the original memo, this area is zoned commercial, and original memo did not consider height changes in the commercial district. So, it considered height changes in the residential districts to gain capacity, but there were no residential changes, height changes in the commercial. And therefore, this property was identified as a potential to increase the height, so that you can get some residential capacity. So, under the original options, these were properties that were identified as potential for extra residential capacity. So in these areas, at least all of these residential areas would have to be upzoned in order to have some sort of residential capacity. So I want to point out that we are, in the original memo, considered rezoning to provide for some additional units, and in our revised options, we'll probably explore widening this area as well. Now, if you remember, in the joint meeting with the county, they wanted the city to consider rezoning in the central part of town, which I believe is in this kind of triangle area here. And I wanted to give that graphic on capacity and target, because rezoning such as this can provide capacity in the long run. However, will it be able to provide the units for the market? Okay? So, there's a difference. So if you rezone it, it automatically doesn't happen. Now, I'm not saying you shouldn't rezone, or you should, but we should be realistic in our expectations of what would happen even with these changes. So, not that this is not something you don't want to consider, but if you do consider it, you want to have the realistic option of how and when it'll develop, and whether it'll actually contribute towards that 20-year market. Now, nothing wrong in planning past the 20 years. I'm a long-range planner. The state asks for the 20-year, and so we meet the minimum requirements, but there's nothing wrong, and doesn't stop a city from planning farther than the 20 years. So, you can think of all of these options as you go through the comp plan process. Now, this, again, as I mentioned, it adds long-term capacity, that's likely to contribute towards the target. But one thing it may do, when you go to a higher rezoning, so if you go to an R4 zoning, let's say, it makes all the single-family non-conforming. The idea of going to a higher rezoning is that you want to get higher development. So if you continue to allow the single-family to add ADUs or add units, the middle housing, all of that will go away, because your hope is that you're going to get R4. So what that will do, when you do these large-scale rezonings, is it'll put some of the existing properties in non-conforming status. So, there are pros and cons to all of these, but it doesn't prevent the city from trying or exploring these options if it so wishes, because we had this discussion at the City Council, and we had council members that expressed interest in exploring. They're like, if we don't do it now, when? Everybody kind of sees this area as a possibility, so when do you start planning for it? So, good questions, and these are all things that we can explore, but you may get to the end of the update and decide that this is not the best tool, that we want to do it later, or you may consider it down the road and not at this time. So you have that choice, but if you want to do it, you can do that as well. So, with all of these options, so if you think about this triangle and the, if I can go back a few slides to here, so all of these, R2, R3, R4, and I wanted to point out that there's some options that are being considered for mixed uses, which includes commercial, which means height increases as well there. So densities and heights for all of these districts. So if you look at, apologize for this. So if you look at this map, and you can see this triangle, and the colors are slightly different. different than the rest, so all your low-density residential, new low-density residential, and along the highway, midway, and downtown are your different colors. Now, all of those, if you consider new development regulations and height, the density of that corridor, the triangle goes up. So you can imagine heights for there are going to go to 50 feet, 60 feet. So redevelopment can happen in all of these areas at a pretty intense rate. So if you want to look at what you want to do in that area, you can definitely explore rezoning. So all of these changes are kind of pushing us towards considering an update to our environmental impact statement. So our existing EIS, environmental impact statement for our comprehensive plan, was done in 1995. It had a 20-year outlook to 2013, and as you can see, we have gone past that. However, they had planned for a population of 28,520. By 2013, we still haven't gotten there. We are at 24,000. So they plan for a lot more growth, and I think that's what has actually sustained the city for the past two updates without any UGA expansions or big changes, is the EIS's outlook for a larger population, and therefore, they plan for a lot more land, and I think that's what has sustained Oak Harbor, but we're kind of getting to the end of that supply, which is why we are considering all the changes we are right now. So because of our 20-year projection, our population will get, go past, at least our projections will go past the 28,000, and so that's a good reason to consider an update. And in EIS, one of the nice things about an EIS is it will provide, it'll look at options. It'll say, no action, and then preferred action, and then there'll be a couple more options, either you do more or you do less, kind of thing. And that's kind of nice to vet all of these, heights, rezoning, et cetera. So you do an analysis, they'll do a little more analysis to see what works, and then the community will have a choice in saying, okay, we like heights here, we like rezoning here, we like these concepts here, let's choose these. And, you know, the community may come out and say, we don't want to see tall buildings, we don't want to see this type of growth here. You never know what we will hear back. We have to take all of those into account before we make that decision, and that is yet to come, and will come with the EIS process and likely the update on the comp plan. So that covers the inside-the-city limits and the development and all the changes that we can consider in our comp plan update. And now, coming to the UGA, part of the allocation is there's still remaining units that need to be accounted for. And we know from the county's lands capacity analysis, we know the capacity that the existing UGA can hold, and we know that there's a deficit of about 1,333 units. So where are those units going to go? And so as a city, we get a chance to have an input, saying, where's the preferred areas of expansion? Where can we serve properties with our utilities? So the county can then make the final, they get the final decision, because the UGA is part of their comprehensive plan. They get to make the final decision on where that boundary is, and we then have to adopt that for planning purposes. So in the UGA, again, you know, usually there's a limited amount of area, and you try and determine what is that capacity in that, how much can you get from that existing UGA? And you determine based on where the existing areas are, and it's also based on existing regulations, and the market factors. What will the market bear? And that's what we kind of got a letter from the county in terms of the density they think that should be planned for in the UGA. And we know that the 20-year target is greater than the 20-year capacity, current capacity that they have in the UGA. So we have to find ways to get more capacity in the UGA, and you do that by expanding the UGA. So that's kind of how we get capacity in the UGA. And you try to hit your target, hopefully with annexations. So you want to see the development happen in the city. So you plan for a capacity of 1,333 through annexations. Now, we can't expect all of these properties to come in within the 20-year period. It doesn't happen, we've seen that in our UGA, current, if any current pattern, if current patterns show us, like in 1995, they adopted the UGA, they thought in 20 years, they'll grow into the full UGA. And here we are 20 years later, still growing into it. So similarly, we'll have an expansion area and a capacity, but we still have a target within that we'll probably hit in 20 years through annexation is how we try and hit that target. So what are some of the UGA metrics in terms of this expansion and trade? So we've identified about 32 acres of commercial land along the Crescent Harbor Road that is in the high-noise area, and even though it's south of 16th Street, it's really close to the accident potential zone. So its developability is fairly low. So we think that would be a good area that you can trade for other commercial lands in other areas where they're more developable. So we've identified about 32 acres. And then, based on the county letter, we determined, they suggested a six-unit-per-acre density for the UGA. That's kind of what they used for calculating the capacity in the current UGA. So we kind of extrapolated that density, because there's no other way to really determine that. And identified 222 acres, residential acres, and that combined with the 32 is for a total of 254 acres. Now, since this slide was prepared, I shared this with the city council, and the city council, and seeing, and I'll show you the map that I shared with city council, have already recommended an additional 150 acres be added to this number, to the 254. So we are already working on adding that, and so the map will be different from what I'm showing you right now, but that's the input that we got from city council. So this is the map we shared with the city council, and it identifies, basically, now, this is the, this is the area that is identified for trade along Crescent Harbor and Rugada, 32 acres. And we think that 32 acres can be transferred to properties along the highway here, some acreage along Fort Nugent and Boone Road, and also to the intersection of Crosby and Heller. So those are places receiving areas likely for some of the commercial trade. And then, the orange or yellow boxes kind of indicate the overall expansion area, and most of those will be all residential designated for low density in the city's comprehensive plan. And then, when they annex into the city, they'll come in at whatever zoning that the developer wants to develop the property as. So with the, with the city council input, now, I mentioned that one of the reasons we selected these areas is, number one, they kind of matched the stats of the 254, we get to 256 or something like that with this acreage, but they're also serviceable. So developer extended sewer, water. Here, the land is sloping away a little bit, but you can actually make it happen. And here, again, you got sewer along Heller, and you got a lift station at the end there, so, and they're contiguous to the city. The main thing is they're contiguous to the city. So properties can annex into the city and develop in the city, there's multiple ways they can do that, and that's what's important, because then that, again, it creates capacity, but how do you hit that target? You want to provide as many opportunities for annexations, so the more they come into the city, the more likelihood of meeting that target. Now, this area, there's, is not contiguous to the city, so you can see the city limits, but there's the dotted line. So that dotted line is the existing UGA. So if you add land here, they'll be contiguous to the UGA, but they're not contiguous to the city limits. So in order for development to happen at urban densities, they got to be in the city, they got to be touching the city limit, not just the UGA, but the city limit, in order to come into the city and get city services. So we intentionally left that area out, but we asked the city council, what do they think? And they said, well, we'd like to see area added in there that kind of connects all the way here. Now, this area is designated as LRS, Lands of Rural Significance, which is one of the areas that the county, it's not the highest priority for them to be in the city, because those lands do have some agricultural value, and so you don't want to see them converted into development if they have potential. And so for that reason, we left it out, but the council wanted to add that in to see if, how the Island County would respond, whether they have changed the designation, whether they see interest, because it's a very strategic location, because if you have areas here in the UGA, and if there is a demand for services to be extended here, that service will go past this area and therefore provide an opportunity for these properties to eventually get into the city services and annex into the city. So it's a long-term play to try and get all of these properties, you know, eventually you want to get all of these islands into the city, right? So how do you do that? And so that was the suggestion, I think, by, from city council member Wiesner, for us to consider adding. So if you add some land there and consider some commercial there, you add another 150 acres. So, you know, going back to my previous slide, I think we add 150 acres, you get to close to about 390-some acres of expansion area that we will probably bring forth to the April 22nd workshop to consider sending to the county. So what are the next steps? We'll prepare revisions to the, to the memo, we'll draft a letter, and I should have changed this slide, but we're going to go to the April 22nd city council workshop. And the mediation for April 10th has been postponed, because I think we are finding ways to be cooperative and consider this redistribution that the Island County has suggested. So I think we can move past at least that point, but we're still keeping our options open if we do need to discuss with them steps further down. We want to advance the EIS process, we need to talk to city council, we need to find out scoping for it, we need to find the budget for it. That's a significant cost that's added to the comp plan process, and EIS is not cheap. They come with a price, but they, it's best done to protect the plan from, from making sure that you're assessing all the impacts that you should. And we're hoping to move the comprehensive plan forward with these targets, once we have these targets, and we at least have a general understanding of the expansion areas, we can start planning for them. We'll start having our OPEC meeting, depending on the city council agreeing on the EIS, that will be a process, we'll have to start scoping for that. That will also have community input. So I can foresee the spring and summer of this year being engaged in community input and considering all these options, so we'll have another survey likely to go out to the community, and these surveys will likely test some of these options with the community. And so hopefully, that will all play into what we eventually want to set up for Oak Harbor. So that is what I have for today. And with that, I will stop and turn it back to the commission for questions and comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone want to start off with questions? Anyone online want to start off? Anyone have any thoughts, questions, or we can start with us in the room if you are still gathering your thoughts? All right. Do you have any questions? Go for it.
Thanks, Cac. I appreciate it. I did listen in to the meeting that you presented the city council with, and that was, I feel for you. But a couple of questions, I appreciate everything that you're doing, but for the land use analysis that we did, and I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the county didn't really accept that because they wanted more, even though the use analysis came out with what they thought our capacities should be. So with that being said, once we do the environmental impact study, if it come out and pretty much well says the same thing as the land use analysis did, will the county accept that for our expansion into the UGA at that point? Because it sounds to me like the county understands that we may need some of the UGA. They understand that. And I see where they're coming from as well as where we're coming from. The problem is, is it seemed to me like, and I like to win, I don't like to lose, but it seemed to me like they were forcing more, trying to put more emphasis on us changing our tool bag to prevent them from having to accept some of it. Maybe I'm wrong, I'm not bad-mouthing anybody, it's just the way I perceived it. So the question that it boils down to is, if the EIS and the land use analysis both concur pretty much well the same, why wouldn't the county then accept that for the use of the UGA? And to, I'll let you answer that first.
Okay. Okay. So I'm going to clarify something here. I am not entirely sure we know for sure what the county is thinking about in terms of UGA expansion. We haven't gotten there yet, right? I mean, so right now, we're preparing the map, so the map goes out, and so then we'll get the first response on the UGA. So I'm not assuming that they have, in their meetings, legislative meetings and so on, have shown their interest in seeing expansion areas, knowing fully well that there's lack of capacity. So I think we just don't know where the areas of interest are for expansion, but I think we both as jurisdictions know that some expansion is necessary with this update. So that, I want to clarify that first. So coming back to the EIS, so the, the EIS will assess what the impacts will be if and when we change our regulations. It's not going to test our regulations and say, this won't work, or that won't work. It says, okay, if you increase your height, you're going to have these impacts that you have to deal with, whether it's stormwater impacts or transportation impacts, and you can do some solutions to deal with those impacts. But it's ultimately the community that chooses what they want to see in terms of their vision for their corridors and for their density, that will actually determine what you choose to go forward with in terms of tools. So the EIS will do an analysis for, you know, if you didn't do anything, so they'll have one option for saying, no action. If you didn't do any action, how far back are you going to fall with your housing, or how far back, or what do you want to be able to accommodate? And then they'll have a preferred option that will have some heights that you vetted with the community, some rezonings that you already vetted with the community, and so on. And then you'll have some other options that will consider, let's say, incentives for even going higher, let's say, 10-story buildings and 15-story buildings if you had affordable housing, or if you were in a particular area. So looking at even higher densities than 60 feet, what is the impact of that on transportation corridors or other? So it will assess those impacts and give feedback on what we have to prepare for. So if we choose to go with, let's say, heights of 100 feet for someone, then we have to bear the consequences of those impacts. then we have to bear the consequences of those impacts and find ways to mitigate them. You know, it's our choice. You can choose the highest you want. All we're saying is, okay, if we choose the highest category, we have to assess the impacts. The impacts mean that we will have larger infrastructure needs, which means we need to find ways to finance them. So the impact fees for all of these are going to be higher because now we've done an analysis knowing what the impacts will be. So we pick and choose with this EIS on how much impacts we want to deal with and how we're going to deal with them. Does that make sense? So it's not going to come and tell us, qualify for us whether we're doing the right thing. They should go back or, there's no perfect formula against which you can assess whether you're going to do something right or wrong.
Well, thanks for answering that and clarifying that because I was misunderstood on what the EIS was for, so thank you for that. With that being said, I don't have any more questions. Thanks, CAC.
Okay. Anyone online at this point? A couple of thoughts that I wanted to clarify. So do we have a good sense of what, so the housing targets that we're trying to meet, what does that difference between the EIS population and our 2045 target population? How is that, do we have a good sense of what that sort of looks like?
Not yet. We know that our 2045 population will cross the existing EIS threshold. Our EIS analysis can calculate for more or less population density. So if we choose higher development regulations or higher height, we could choose for a higher population. We don't know that yet, so that choice can be made after the EIS.
Okay. And so in terms of urban growth area and then, I guess, the intersection of county regulations and city regulations, six units per acre in the urban growth area seems low compared to city densities that we typically allow, right? I guess, so is our sort of assumption that we are saying, you know, we need 250 acres because we're assuming that it's all at that sort of six dwellings per acre county standard? And then as folks show interest, we give them the opportunity to annex in, rezone to something that is more, greater than six dwelling units per acre? And then at that point, their, you know, our capacity that we have created in the UGA goes unrealized? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
There will, there will be, yes, there will be, so I think the six units per acre is the lowest density of our residential district. So we can potentially have every applicant come in and say, I just want to build at that density, which we don't think will happen because we have to accommodate more AMI distribution in there. However, we don't have a good methodology of determining exactly how much area we need at city densities because we really can't assign the zoning to land in the county. And we don't know what their choice is. We want to have some choice for the applicant as well and developable or in terms of how they want to realize the developability of their land. And so the six acres is just a, is sort of an agreed measure. Just like how you would have in the countywide planning policies on an agreed way to do certain things. It's just an agreed measure to determine the area. I mean, that's, what will happen when they come into the city is hard to predict and determine at this time. So that's why this methodology and approach.
So in terms of the commercial areas that we are wanting to facilitate by the UGA land swaps and sort of that component of this, do you have any further thoughts or any other ideas? And I guess this is also me saying, maybe we should think about this. As like those areas at the edge of town that we're thinking might be appropriate for commercial, is it worthwhile also thinking that as we sort of create these centers, these nodes that are outside of our downtown core and off the highway and sort of outside of those areas, is it worth thinking about either looking at, I guess, I have a map in front of me. And so like looking at, like, Wouldby Avenue or Swan Town out as like potential areas to move and see, you know, beyond 20 years but into that like sort of future, future, future planning of like these corridors could become less single-family residential and more higher density or commercial mix type things? Or is it worth thinking about at the edge of town where we have these commercial centers if there is opportunity for that sort of shift from having all of our services and businesses and those types of things sort of centered in the triangle? Is it, can you, do you have any more thoughts about that?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So one of the things that we learned from our first survey when we went to the community is that there's a great interest in neighborhood commercial. So one of the reasons for coming with these neighborhood, commercial nodes in these expansion areas is to kind of follow that kind of concept of trying to provide for these options. They serve many planning purposes. They can be convenience for people so that they don't have to make a trip. It helps transportation. There are many benefits. It serves the county, larger county area, depending on what type of commercial we have there. So, but the concept of neighborhood commercial in these UGA expansions is a small slice of what we can consider for inside the city. And so when we come forward with our comp plan proposals for the county, we will have some maps to indicate areas within the city that could be likely candidates for neighborhood commercial as well. So we are working on that and that's part of the concept. And not only is that a growing concept in the community and it's great to hear that the community wants it, but I think at the state level, there's also some discussion on actually requiring or at least allowing cities to not be too much of a barrier in seeing these neighborhood commercial kind of uses be incorporated into cities. Traditionally, under the old zoning and some of the court cases, some isolated commercial zoning in residential districts were considered like spot zoning and there were some impacts related to that that cities generally were trying to avoid. But we've seen over time that some of these areas are actually conveniences for the neighborhood and some of them are actually amenities. And so now they're becoming more of a desirable kind of a land use. And so the city is looking forward to trying to accommodate that. These areas and the expansion areas are easy targets, I think, because they're just, with new development, there's a lot more potential. But I think the city is working on trying to identify land even inside the city to provide for some commercial nodes. And it could be at existing intersections, Wouldby and Heller or, you know, Sixth Avenue, Sixth and, you know, right by Broadview, there's some areas that could use it, you know? So there are, there are potential pockets within the city where you can accommodate these. And if, if you provide as a city opportunities for them, then, and then allow them to organically develop based on demand or interest, I think you leave your options open for the future.
Thank you. I guess another question about the intersection of like annexation and urban growth areas. So like, right, clearly there are areas that are not, I guess, okay, just take a step back. When I think of Oak Harbor, right, there isn't, like, the boundary line of Oak Harbor does not really designate the place, right? Like, urban growth area, places that are developed as single-family neighborhoods still feel like Oak Harbor to me, right? Like, the delineation between, there are areas that are sort of islands of island county that are unincorporated, but they're still neighborhoods. That all still feels like Oak Harbor to me, right? And so I think like, in those cases, in those spots where they still are in Island County, what role do we have as the city of Oak Harbor to like bring them into the city, right? Like, what, I guess, what is our responsibility for those sort of already developed places? And I guess, more, more so than anything, I'm curious on like, why are they not in the city already?
I think it's primarily infrastructure and choice.
Okay.
So choices may be before infrastructure. The choices, I think these island, islands of unincorporated county within, in the city is actually a sweet spot because you're in the county and you are not paying the city utilities. You're not, you know, doing the city taxes, you're on the island county tax. So it's a choice that you're really close to all these facilities, very accessible, schools, commercial districts and so on. But you still have lower property taxes or lower requirements in terms of what it is that you, you need permits for or whatever it is. So that's the choice of, and that comes along with reluctance to actually wanting to be in the city because as long as you can enjoy the benefits, you're going to do that. So that's, that's one thing that doesn't motivate these areas to come into the city. And it makes it difficult for the city to annex them because when you encounter friction, there's a lot more time, resources, et cetera, that you're spending. And so what becomes an annexation, what you think is logical, it becomes a challenge. So that is the reason why most of these areas are still outside of the city. And then there are some annexation laws that are in place, I think, that the city has not used because there's, there's tools to undo them. So there are state laws that say if there are certain area less than certain acreage, the city, and if the city is fully surrounding it, that the city can annex them in. But that same law also allows for the people within that annexed area to petition themselves out. So you can make all the efforts to try and get them in, but there's no guarantee that they'll stand because there's inability for them to choose to vote themselves out, I think. So there's that process as well. So you have to wait for a sweet spot, a time, a point in time when they need city utilities. And the timing of how that happens differs from property to property. And that is the second challenge in trying to provide infrastructure. If all of their utilities were to fail at one time, you'd have the ability for them to get together, make common decisions, get into agreements, whether it's LID, some way, infrastructure needs to be funded. And all the infrastructure that currently is in the ground is paid for by somebody, by the developer, by the property owner who built the house. So in similar fashion, it is the responsibility of that property owner to pay for that infrastructure to come to their house. And so that will all have to be done. And those are all very challenging things to accomplish unless the point in time comes where they need the service and the city has the resources to bring all of that together. So that's the challenge in why some of these areas are so difficult and why we don't want to create more of these areas because it's always going to be challenging.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't think that I have any other questions. Was, I guess, I'll open it up back for the folks online if you have any comments. But, CAC, is there anything specific that you want us to give you feedback on that you didn't hear? Or is this sounding good?
Sounds good. If, if the commissioners have any particular areas of UGA expansion that you want to talk about, this would be the time to do it. You know, we, I can tell you, we did consider a lot of areas that are not shown on the map, of course, because they are either designated as, you know, LRS or they have significant wetlands or, you know, there's some sort of a barrier that didn't make sense. And so we, like I said, part of my goal in looking at all of this was not only to see what capacity is, but can we actually get that target? You know, that's, that's key, I think, to focus on. And so trying to make annexations much easier is the best way, I think, to approach that.
I guess, one, one thought in response to that. Are there, can you talk a little bit about any thoughts that you've had or looked into about like UGA expansion north of Crescent Harbor, right? Like on sort of like, I know that that long chunk is, is Navy Land, but like, north of that, is that out of like the noise zones and the accident potential zones? Are there thoughts about that specific area? Or are we, does it primarily make sense to look, I guess, west?
West, west and south, yeah. The accident potential zone, I think crosses all the way, if I remember right, comes up to Crescent Harbor Road, I think. And so you'd have to kind of skip that or get past, it's almost like a barrier. It's like a highway. It's an imaginary barrier. So contiguity north of Crescent Harbor is a little more challenging for infrastructure extensions and so on. So we didn't look very deeply into that area. It didn't seem like that area was, would have any efficient extension of infrastructure. A good question, yeah, absolutely.
Makes sense. Okay. Last call for folks online. Going once, going twice. All right. Thank you very much, CAC.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is a discussion on our clearing and grading code amendments presented by our senior planner, Dennis LaFever. All right, go for it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. J, or, good evening, planning commissioners. I'll guarantee you two things. One, this presentation will be far less complicated as CAC's comp plan issues that he's dealing with, and it's going to be shorter as well. This is your second touch on this item, and I thought I'd take the opportunity tonight and just kind of show you what kind of progress we've been making on this code amendment. I will attempt to share my screen, so Tim be at the ready in case I'm not able to do this on Teams. Okay, can you see that?
We can see a couple of them. It's
Okay, I'm not sure how to make them bigger, but
Okay, we can see it. Perfect.
You can see it? Okay. It's a short presentation anyway, so what I'll just do is go with it. Okay, it's a short presentation anyway, so what I'll just do is go with it. Anyways, what I did mention at your January meeting was the reason for this code amendment is to basically combine the land clearing and the grading permit process that we implement on some development proposals. And the reason for that is the land clearing review and permitting, which is entitled nineteen, chapter forty-seven, is under the jurisdiction of development services while the grading regulations are under public works, the engineering division. So there was always some type of additional coordination needed. Sometimes there was some confusion between regulating both the clearing and grading of a certain project. So what we're looking at doing is combining those two in one chapter of the municipal code. Where would be the best place to put it? Well, I did some research on other communities and for the majority of other communities' clearing and grading codes, they place them in their environmental title. So that's why we are looking at moving them out of Title Nineteen into Title Twenty. And the other reasons are clearing and grading have intrinsic linkages to other environmental aspects, just as specifically the geologically hazardous areas, flood damage prevention, vegetation preservation, storm water, water quality. So there's natural linkages that would allow it to be a better fit in Title Twenty. Plus with Forest Practices Act and the Shoreline Management Act, which are all couched in Title Twenty, that's also very consistent. The other thing that we're doing, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting too, is making the city engineer or his or her designate as the authority over clearing and grading. Much of that work presently is done through the grading efforts of the engineering staff, so it's a natural fit to slide over the, the clearing aspect as well, the processing for a clearing permit as well as grading permit. As you can tell in the attachment, one which was the rough draft of the tw, uh, the new chapter, twenty fifteen, much of the grading regulations and forest practices are couched within the storm water management manual for Western Washington, which I think the most recent manual is the two thousand nineteen. So all of this clearing and grading will be basically under one roof and should provide some permit efficiency and consistency as we move through this process. My very short presentation ends with this slide, which says basically tonight we're going to give you an opportunity to take a look at the draft chapter that we're preparing. We're still having discussions with engineering staff to work out some of the details on, on this effort. City council will have a take, an opportunity to take a look at this draft through April workshop. We've got a couple of things, minor housekeeping issues to do with code amendments, and we hope to bring it back to you at your May meeting for a public hearing. And by that time, it should be in ordinance format and ready to be approved. And then subsequently, we'll take your recommendation to the city council at their public hearing in, in June. So with that, with the very brief presentation, but an update, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any questions from people in the room? Okay, I'll have a couple, but I'll open it. Any questions, any comments from our commissioners online?
No, sir.
No, I'm good at this time.
All right, thank you both very much. I guess the only question or clarification I have, right? So in looking through the draft, it's on page nineteen of twenty-one in the packet and page ten of the code, there's, there's a section about tree retention and how that specifically calls back to chapter nineteen forty-six. So I guess my question is, does that, when we're talking about tree retention and the requirements of tree retention and, and that component of development, that is still a development services responsibility? And that's not necessarily getting shifted into like the rules for how folks go about clearing and grading? So there's still a little bit of that overlap and coordination?
I will have to look at chapter nineteen forty-six and make sure that that's an accurate statement. I think that's a good question and I'm glad you brought that up because it's what this draft is for. So I will look at that, have discussions with other members of development services and engineering and see where that would best be referenced. That's a good question. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think just to, to further that point along, I think it's, just as we're working through coordinating and consolidating this with engineering, I think it would be useful to make sure that they at least know and understand what the long-term goals surrounding tree retention and tree planting and all of those are. So as they are looking at these plans, you know, they're not putting themselves in a situation where a developer is asking to clear all the trees on a parcel and that's not something that is in line with what we're wanting to see happen and, and all that. So, but that's all that I wanted to clarify. So I'll say any last comments, any last opportunities on clearing and grading? Thank you for your presentation, going once, going twice. Okay, thank you again, and we'll look forward to it in.
Thank you.
In a couple of months. Okay, so that is the last of our discussion items. I'll move on to member comments. Does anyone online have any specific comments that they want to bring up at this point? Or are you all good? Okay, going once, going twice, sounds good. Any comments for, from folks in the room? Okay, hearing none. The only comments that I have is I went to the, the workshop with town council a couple weeks ago and, nope, city council, sorry. And I heard sort of CAC's presentation there as well, and so that was very interesting and very informative and I'm looking forward to supporting them and giving some good input on, on the comprehensive plan as we move forward. That's all I have. And with that, I'll let everyone know that our next scheduled meeting is May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, so hope to see you all there. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn from the April eighth Planning Commission meeting.
I'll second.
Motion by Wilson, second by Frye, all is in favor. Hi.
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 Motion is adjourned. All right, her meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.